Meeting on November 6th at 7:15 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out to be with us this evening. We have started a meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Pena in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, please silence all cell phones, electronic devices to avoid disruptions around you. And now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Apologize for running a couple minutes late. I know a couple of students have something they have to get to, so we're going to move quickly to start with them. First, you can see right here from this outstanding group in front of us, we have, and I heard them singing when we were in the back room, we have a presentation from Young Junior High, the young men's group. Let me read a little bit about this group. This group has over 300 students who are enrolled in the choir program at Young Junior High, many of who are also involved in band, orchestra, athletics, AVID, pre-AP classes, and other student leadership organizations. The Young Men Varsity Tenor Base Choir is comprised of 70 7th and 8th grade guys who have all had the privilege of meeting together right before lunch each day without a seat to spare. The young choirs are under the direction of Ms. Kristy Jones, who is in her 15th year of teaching, 14 years at Young, she started when she was seven, and Keith Daniel, her partner in crime for the past six years, not crime, we'll just leave that out. Under the direction, the choirs at Young have performed in the middle school, junior high, national convention in Dallas, Southwest ACDA in Little Rock, Arkansas, and the State Board of Education in Austin. Last May, they submitted recordings to Texas Music Educators Association, and they have been invited to sing at the TEMA convention in San Antonio this coming February. This is a tremendous honor, and if you don't know what an honor it is to sing at TMAA, it is the cream of the crop organizations, and for the junior high to do that, and then also, we have a group from Martin High School that we're forming also at the same time. It is a very, very distinct honor and a huge accomplishment for these young men at Young Junior High, and not only for Young, but for the entire AISD. It is a nice honor to have these men singing. And now, we'll hear a piece of why they are so qualified to sing. Please take it away, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Hogg, I think you might like the fourth song the best.
Uh-oh, okay.
I'm really sorry that Boomer Center didn't make our cut.
(laughing).
(inaudible) (singing) Fight for the school we love so dearly. We'll hit 'em hard, we'll hit 'em low, so we'll push the ball across the goal, Tech. Fight, fight, we'll praise your name, who's too faint. Fight for the scarlet and the sky. We will hit 'em, we will wreck 'em, Texas Tech. And the victory bells will ring out there down you, Baylor. Baylor, you were all for you. Go Bears, come on and show our spirit, dear old Baylor spirit, through and through and through. Go Bears, come on and fight, fight them with all your might, you grew ins gold and win all our victories for the green and gold. B-A-Y-L-O-Y, Baylor Bears, fight. We'll raise a song, both loud and long, and cheer our team to victory. For TCU, so tried and true, we pledge eternal loyalty. Ra-ra, TCU, ra-ra, TCU. Fight with all your might, roll up the scores for TCU. Their white and purple flags, whose heroes never lack, horned frogs, we are all for you. Holla, balloon, connect, connect, holla, balloon, connect, connect. Goodbye to Texas University, so long to the orange and the white. Good luck to dear old Texas Aggies, they are the boys who showed the real old fight. The eyes of Texas are on you, that is the song they sing so well. So goodbye to Texas University, we're gonna beat you all to chigga, rigga, ram, chigga, rigga, ram, real tough, real tough, Texas A&amp;M. Texas, fight, Texas, fight, and it's goodbye to A&amp;M. Texas, fight, Texas, fight, and we'll put over one more win. Texas, fight, Texas, Texas, fight, for Texas that we love best. Give 'em heck, give 'em heck, go Hornets, go. And it's goodbye to all the rest. The eyes of Texas are upon you till Gabriel knows his home.
Wow. Well, let me just say, if you can't tell why they're being invited as one of the top choirs, now I hope you can. They also know how to butter up an entire audience by singing all the school fight songs. So, way to go. And gentlemen, let me just say, I think everyone's more impressed, that is one of the best sounding renditions, and you're only in junior high? It's truly amazing. So, congratulations, thank you very much, Ms. Jones and your team, thank you so much for leading these young men, and gentlemen, thank you for leading us and representing Arlington in the next coming couple of months. I've never heard the Aggie fight song sound so good.[463.56][463.56](laughing). I'm sorry, the war hymn, we don't have fight songs, we have war hymns. I'm just glad we have three Aggies up here now, sport's doing well for that, so. Good job, Mr. Hibbs, with your TCU. They've got to represent us all in football right now. So, with that, we'll move to a wonderful part of the portion tonight, our Student of the Month. This is something that, as a board, we get to honor one student a month, so there's not that many. You get to come up and do this, so it really is one of the best moments of the board meeting tonight. So, tonight, we get an honor from Bowie High School, our Student of the Month, Magali Horeah. Please, Magali, come up, please.[507.81][507.81](applause). All right, Magali, now I'm going to read some nice words about you. This is the time you have to sit there and enjoy, because you've earned it, and it's really impressive. So, Magali's a very active student on the Bowie High School campus, and she truly represents what it means to be ready, responsible, and respectful as a school challenges its students to be. Magali's a top-notch student who's involved in AVID, international baccalaureate classes, pre-AP, and advanced placement courses, and the culinary dual credit courses at Tarrant County College. How do you fit that much?
I don't know.[546.29][546.29](laughing).
I see her family, does she have any other time for any, y'all see her at all?
At night.[552.12][552.12](laughing).
Because of her hard work, she's also already earned 14 college hours of Spanish and six hours of history. 20 hours, that's impressive. Magali's also very involved on Bowie campus participating in Key Club, SAFA, National Spanish Honor Society, and Student Council. She's a student trainer for the Bowie athletics teams, and she is Class of 2015 representative who assists the class officers. Teachers and students alike across Bowie recognize Magali's dedication, commitment, and work ethic. She's an outstanding student who's a great example of what a Bowie volunteer represents. At this time, it's our honor to present Magali with our November AISD Board of Trustees Student of the Month. At this time, any words of advice for us, which we'll always take from our outstanding students, and anyone you'd like to introduce?
I would like to introduce my parents, Gustavo Oreda, Marilena Oreda, Marisol, and my sister, and Gustavo Oreda, he's back there, and I'd like to thank all my teachers and counselors, and my friends that supported me, encouraged me, and gave me advice to do better, and for y'all, keep up the good and hard work for to give us our education that we need, and to be someone in life, and that's it, thank you.
That is, so, Mr. Manley, come on down. I always like to call down the principal on this. And Magali, you're a senior, right?
Yes.
So, we always like to ask seniors, even though it's early in the year, what are you thinking about for your plans?
I would like to be a chef, so culinary, dual credit culinary, I'm looking, my goal is to open up my restaurant, I don't know what kind of food yet, but that's my goal to open it up. The schools I've been looking into is the R Institute, UNT, and Johnson-Wilson University in Miami. I've applied to them already, I'm just waiting for acceptance letter, but that's my goal to be, to be a chef and own my own restaurant.
I look forward to buying your cookbooks and eating your food.[674.62][674.62](laughing). Because I have a feeling I'm going to have a knife line by you before long. Mr. Manley, some words, please.
Yeah, it's just a truly outstanding representative, you know, it's difficult to select one student when you have over 3,000, but Magali, she is, receives recognition from her teachers, the adults, and her peers on the campus, talk relentlessly about everything she does, she's the leader, steps up, takes initiative, and, you know, it's just, she's a prime example of what we want Bowie High School students to be.
It's outstanding. Thank you for being a representative of all of Bowie High School and other students, and I see your sister, what a, what a great person to look up to and roll up to. So, at this time, if Dr. Vasos will join me down there, we'd like to present you a token of our appreciation. And Magali, up after the board, we all wear, mine's in my pocket, we all wear our Board of Trustees pins, you can put this on your badge, you can wear ID wherever you want,[746.12][746.12](laughing), break it into a hair bow, whatever you'd like to do.[749.82][749.82](laughing). Thank you, let's get a couple pictures. One, two, three. Congratulations. Very proud.[757.12][757.12](applause). Next, we have our, time to recognize our community partners and how much our community groups do for us in the community, and tonight, we have the distinct honor for presenting our Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation to the Youth Education Success Summit, and Ms. Lisa Thompson is accepting. Lisa, would you please come up here?[818.01][818.01](applause). Now, Lisa, it's hard to follow that Student of the Month, and I, they taught people a long time ago, you don't follow really successful students, but you're worth it. So, it's a, it's a great group. Let me, let me read a couple of things about Youth Education Success Summit, and what Lisa and her group have done. On Saturday, October 11th, Youth Education Success Summit 2014 was held at the University of Texas Arlington. The YES Summit is a collaborative effort that unites its partners to support the students of the Arlington Independent School District. YES Summit partners are as follows: Arlington Foundation for Excellence in Education, UT Arlington Trio Pre-College Programs, Big Brothers Big Sisters Lone Star, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, the Psi Theta Omega Chapter, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, the New Phi Lambda Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity, the Fort Worth Arlington Grand Prairie Alumni Chaplains, and the Arlington AISD Dropout Prevention Departments. The YES Summit provides area students with the opportunity to attend workshops that promote goal development, leadership, and college preparation. In addition, they also offer parent workshops that are available to discuss topics on preparing their students for educational success. This past October, the YES Summit 2014 hosted over 340 students and 73 parents. Since 2011, the YES Summit has provided educational workshops to over 1,200 students and 300 parents. The YES Summit is an excellent example of community organizations for our students, and something that we can't do, and we don't have the time, and we have to rely on partners to be able to do, and it makes such an impact to over 1,200 students and 300 parents, but we all know, most of those parents have more than one child, so it's a much, much larger number of what you're impacting, and what a, what a great target of individuals you're going after, and we just can't thank you enough. So, at this time, Lisa, please, if you could introduce anyone, anyone else from your organization, and also, any words for us, please.
All right, I would like to, thank you very much, President Hogg. I'd like to introduce Cecily Frazier, stand up, Benita Holloway, Felicia Battles, sorry.
And Cheryl Carpenter.
These are members of the Psi Theta Omega Chapter, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. We also hold or have our Arlington Foundation for Excellence in Education, which hosted the YES Summit, and we are very honored and excited to receive this honor. We pride ourselves in helping all mankind through service to their community, our youth, we know that they are important, and we're also very excited that AISD is acknowledging the work that we're doing, because we really pride ourselves in helping our community and working with our youth to help them educationally and the parents focus on being successful in all educational endeavors. So, we thank you very much, and we appreciate your support, especially Erin Peralis.
Back there on the left.
Thank you very much for, for the honor, and I also want to acknowledge Rick Garcia, who has been assisting us this year with our work with the parents, so we want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Lisa, and your whole group, and I think this is just one piece of what all y'all do in the community, I see you, most of you around at many things, so we know how much you do beyond this one summit, and it takes, it takes that for us to be really successful, you know, it's the, it takes a village to raise these children, so we thank you for all your help. At this time, Dr. Vasos, make one more trip down there, we'd like to present you guys a token of our appreciation.
Congratulations, I guess, thank you for presenting this, thank you so much, thank you. Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations. Take your picture.[1077.12][1077.12](laughing).
Oh, boy. Well, say it again. She's a chef, not a girl.[1087.12][1087.12](laughing). I mean, Magali's a large Texas dog. We just sent Magali on the path of becoming a professional photographer now, so.
Next step.
I believe it, if you want to do it, you could do it. Thank you so much to YES Summit and all of our community groups. Next, we have a short presentation of something that one of my board members, Ms. Pena, brought up, and we started having the discussion, and it's definitely a huge program that we need to have a discussion about for AISD. So, next up, we have from Dental Health Arlington, Ms. Nancy Blinn, the Executive Director with Dental Health Arlington. Nancy, would you come up?
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, President Hogg, Dr. Cavazos, and Gloria for inviting me. Gloria's actually on my board at Dental Health Arlington, so it was at her suggestion that I come and speak, and I feel kind of funny, because I'm kind of addressing all of you guys, as well as the board, so anyhow, I apologize if I have my back to you guys, but I am the new Executive Director, I am an Arlington graduate, if you will, I am a Wimish, a Shaq, a Lamar grad, and a UTA member as well, so, and I went to Tarrant County College. I'm actually a clinical dental hygienist by trade, if you will, and moved away for about eight years, went up to Connecticut, and then came back for this wonderful new opportunity, and I'm super excited to be back in Arlington, and super excited just to see the caliber of the kids, it's, it's super exciting. My daughter's going to Arlington High School, I'm having a little hard time, because I'm a Lamar grad, but my husband is an Arlington High grad, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to suck it up, so when I go to the games, she's in band, so I'm very proud to be here tonight, thank you so much. I want to give you guys a little history of Dental Health Arlington. It originally came from a United Way Needs Assessment for no or low-cost alternative, excuse me, a needs assessment for no or low-cost alternative, because we had no dental treatment, no one had anywhere to go in the Tarrant County area for any low-cost dental work. So, we started off in the Allen Sacks Dental Clinic in 1992 with all the volunteer staff, and we were together with Mission Arlington initially. While it proved to be a good start, DHA had other ambitions, which included starting a school-based clinic. That year, we started with two schools. In 1994, DHA branched off away from Mission Arlington to expand our dental services, both in the clinic and in the schools. In 2004, we wound up at the old Luke Honda dealership sales office on the corner of East and Front Streets in downtown Arlington. And fast forward to today, currently, our Dental, Dental Health Arlington Clinic, we have two staff dentists, we have two staff registered dental assistants, one receptionist, and one part-time hygienist. We service about 3,000 patients per year at low cost, we typically are about 30% less than a private dental practice. We offer a lot of the same services that dental practice would offer, but we do provide that at a much, much lesser rate, so we're for people, we're sort of the safety net solution for people who don't have dental insurance and aren't Medicaid or CHIP eligible. We also have the SMILES program, which is what I'm actually going to talk about today, and that's actually the school-based program that we're super proud of, and it's an award-winning program, we actually won an award from President Clinton several years ago, and we're very, very proud of it, and a lot of people have actually modeled their sealant program after our sealant program. SMILES stands for Sealing Molars Improves the Lives of Every Student. For those of you who don't know, sealants are a little plastic protective coating that we paint on the back teeth, on the molars, that actually helps keep the decay rate down. We've actually reduced the decay rate in the last 22 years by up to 50% by doing this particular procedure. So, what we do is we go into the first, second, and third, we go into 29 schools, and they're the Title I Low-Income Schools in Arlington, we do go to one in Mansfield at this point as well, we service approximately 8,700 children with free services, we actually provide oral hygiene instruction and teach kids about proper snacks, and good things to eat, and bad things not to eat, in the first, second, and third grade, and then we have a dentist that actually comes on site, we actually pack up our equipment and go to different schools every single week, and we go, and we do this education, but then the doctor also screens the kids for decay. If they do not have a dental home, and they have nowhere to go, we refer back to the nurse, the nurse gets back to us, and those kids can come see us in the dental clinic for free, that's part of our United Way funding, so we will see them at no cost. Our staff is made up of the SMILES director, she's also a dental assistant, we have a part-time dentist, and two part-time hygienists, and two part-time assistants, and they pack everything up. So, I just want to show you guys real quick, this, this video.
My name is Glenda Bell, I'm with Dental Health Arlington, I'm the SMILES director, and we are at Atherton Elementary today, putting sealants on the second and third graders. We teach oral hygiene and how to brush properly to the first, second, and third graders, but we only place sealants on the second and third graders to help prevent cavities. We send out permission slips with all the students, whenever they come back signed, then we'll place sealants, and we'll give them a sticker, they get really cool stickers. All the girls get Hannah Montana, and Hello Kitty, and I Carley, and the boys get Superman, and Batman, and Transformers, they love them. This is the SMILES team, we have a team of three hygienists and four assistants, and today, there's five of us working, we have two assistants working and two hygienists. This is one of our teams, Kristen is a hygienist, and Sasha is the assistant, and they're placing a sealant on a third grader. We simply use air, water, paintbrushes, flashlights, and cotton, the kids love it, it tickles their teeth, and they get to wear really cool shades to keep the bright light out of their eyes, and the best thing about it is a free service, it's free. If they were to go to the dentist and have it done, it would cost about $300. It takes two SUVs to haul all of our equipment, our patient chairs, our assistant chairs, our hygiene chairs, our units, our compressors, and then our two bins with all of our supplies in it. But yeah, it's an actual dentist office that comes to the school. We put sealants on the children to help prevent cavities, and then we have Carley and Jay over here, Carley's a hygienist that goes out with us, and Jay is actually the lead dental assistant at the clinic, and she's out helping us today, so we place sealants on the six-year molars. They're kind of new, they probably just got them within the last year, so they haven't really had much time to decay, so we're going in to help prevent the decay by placing a sealant on there. We do 31 schools in a year, 30 of them are in Arlington, and one is in Mansfield, we average one school per week, we're there three, four days during the week, depending on how big the school is. My name is Glenda Bell, I'm the SMILES director for Dental Health Arlington, we are at Atherton Elementary, and I got work to do.
So, that just kind of gives you guys a little snippet of what they get to do during the day, and they actually set up, every week, they go to a different school, we have pictures from last year when they were out in the snow, so it is a very expensive program, it runs about $70,000 with overhead equipment and salaries. Many of our grants come from United Way, Ronald McDonald, the City of Arlington, we get CDBG funding, we have, needs are many, we have a wish list of many needed supplies, we're hoping AISD may be able to help us at some point with some of those things, I have passed those all out to you guys. We would like to invite any of you guys out to the schools, if any of you are ever available and you just want to come see, please let me know, because I can let you know where they are, they would love to have you guys and be able just to see what the program is. The kids treat us like rock stars when we get out there, it's kind of fun, sometimes we're stuck in a corner, sometimes we're in a hallway, sometimes we're in the cafeteria, so I thank you for all of your hard work for AISD, and the last little plug for me is save the date, we have a Love That Smile fundraiser, and it is Friday, February 27th, from 7 to 11 at Casherel, and I would love to see all of you there, if somebody wants to invite somebody, we would love to have you guys. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Blinn, and what a, what a great program, because I don't, people, when you have a toothache, you know your life, it's tough, and so the more we can prevent that, for students who aren't seeing the dentists as often, these sealants are huge programs, help keep students in school, helps prevent dental costs, it's a huge, huge asset. Ms. Pena, thank you for serving on that board, and representing our board and the community on that, it's a huge asset. A program that people from all over the country have come in to follow and emulate is Dental Health Arlington, so congratulations, and thank you for that, thank you for presenting, it's always good to make sure we know exactly what is happening in each one of our schools. Thank you, Ms. Blinn. Ms. Pena, anything you want to say?
Well, I did want to mention that on the letterhead that you all see here, where that lists the dentists on the side, they volunteer their time as well, they're on the board, but they also volunteer their time as dentists, and sometimes when the work cannot be done at that location, at Dental Health, they take them to their own personal practice and complete the work on the, on the individuals that need the work, so they're very, very dedicated individual group people that are on this board.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Pena. Next, we'll move on to introduce new and newly-elected DIDC Making Committee members, Dr. Vasos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and every year, we'd like to bring forward our DIDC, or District Instructional Decision-Making Committee, for them to be introduced, they dedicate a lot of time, they are elected to this position, and they devote a lot of time to our instructional process, and Rick Garcia will introduce them at this time.
Good evening, President Hogg, Dr. Cavazos, and members of the board, it's an honor for me to introduce the DIDC members for the new 2014-2015, it's kind of funny for me to say that it's November, right? A new year, we actually held elections back in late September, early October, so we've had the membership in place for some time now. When you hired me, you empowered me to transform as many things as I possibly could, and I took that to heart, so this is one of the groups that we've been working with quite extensively, and by transforming, we're talking about, we added an executive cabinet to kind of model you as well, and what And what this executive cabinet has done is kind of re-energized the committee. And as you know, the committee serves as consultants to you, the board, in matters related to academic affairs. So that's exactly what we're doing in this case. To help me call out the members, I'm asking the co-facilitator, Ms. Jody Dunn, to come up here and help me call out the names, please.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos, President Hogg, and Board of Trustees. It is a great honor to serve as the co-facilitator of the DIDC with Mr. Garcia. He has revived the DIDC with his enthusiasm for collaboration between this committee and other decision-makers in the district. The other committee members and I are being challenged by his leadership to move this district to premier status. So please allow me to introduce the new DIDC members. Members, please stand when I call your name and remain standing. First, for the community and higher ed partners, we have Dr. Stephanie Barnes from TCC. Our parents, Harry Hood, who is our senior high parent representative, Carla Zapata, our elementary school parent, Jason Rimmer is our junior high parent. He is not here this evening.
He's in the back.
He is there.
Snuck in on, he snuck in.
He did. We have our campus-based professional staff at large, Suzie Mitchell from Beckham Elementary. She is our principal at large. Campus-based professional staff teachers, Kristy Peralta from Nichols Junior High, Sarah Mayo from Sam Houston High School, Eric McKeever from Workman Junior High, Shontae Mackey from Seguin High School, Jeffrey Grissom from Ferguson Junior High, and Carmen Nephew from Beckham Elementary. I'd also like to introduce the other cabinet members to you this evening. We have our secretary, Sarah Spurrier from Martin High School. She's not here. Our publicity is Sandra Guile from Lamar High School. Membership Kathy Tucker from Young Junior High, and our parliamentarian Patty Belknap from Johns Elementary. These are our new members for your DIDC this year.
One last thing. Sandra, who just sat down, was able to move a lot of our election from paper to electronic. And working closely with Leslie Johnston, we went to that change this year. Needless to say, it was a relief to get rid of all that paper, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, and thank you to everyone. I know how much time it takes on the work you do, but it's critical work, especially to the parents serving on it and our staff. Thank you so much. There are lots of decisions, lots of things that infect the entire 8,000 employees and 64,000 students that your committee's making. So I challenge you and urge you to understand how serious this committee is, and please commit the time, and thank you in advance for all the hours. I just apologize now, it's a lot of hours. It's good hours, though, so thank you so much for all your work. Perfect. We don't have any appointments tonight. Next, we'll come to, now we'll go to public hearing. We'll open our public hearing on Schools First, the State Accountability Rating. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And the Texas Education Agency has released its 2014 Financial Accountability Ratings for all Texas school districts. State law requires each district to hold a public hearing to discuss its ratings and to invite public comment on the rating. Executive Director Tony Drolinger will present a report on our financial accountability rating. Following his report, we will invite the public comment on this rating. So, Tony, welcome.
Thank you. President Hogg, Board members, Dr. Kavassos, good evening. Schools First is a system used by TEA to rate the overall effectiveness and efficiency of a school district's financial management. FIRST is an acronym, as TEA is so prone to use, for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. This is the 12th year that TEA has assigned ratings through the Schools First system. I'm pleased to say that for 2014, the district has received the highest rating, which is Superior Achievement, and that is also the same rating that we received last year. Schools First uses 20 indicators to evaluate the quality of a school district's financial management system. Some of those indicators include the items listed here, which are fund balance, administrative cost, tax collection percentages, audit findings, student/teacher ratios, et cetera. And this information is based on data from the 12-13 school year and fiscal year. Based on the scores on those 20 indicators, each district is assigned one of the five ratings that you see here. Of course, Superior is the highest, above standard, then standard, then substandard, and suspended. And any district that receives a substandard or suspended rating has to file a corrective action plan with TEA. And I'm pleased to say I have no idea what that plan looks like. Now for the, kind of the legalese, school districts are required to issue a financial management report that includes the Schools First evaluation from TEA for the current year, the prior year evaluation from TEA, and then certain disclosures about the superintendent and board members. Each district must hold a public hearing on its Schools First rating and financial management report. Copies of the district's 2014 report are available here today, this evening, outside the boardroom. They're also online under the district's Financial Transparency tab. And then also, anybody that needs a copy can contact the Finance Department at any time, and we'll be happy to provide that. Of course, ratings for all districts are also available on TEA's website. Individuals may also, I'm sorry, tonight's meeting does satisfy the requirements for a public hearing on our Schools First rating system. And at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions, and it would be appropriate to invite public comment.
Perfect. Any questions from board members? Dr. Reisch.
I guess it's a question. Does it ever get boring or tired to be the best all the time year after year?
I don't know how to answer that other than to say.
You don't have to. Loaded question. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
You guys, you, Cindy, everybody in your departments are just stellar. You really make it so easy for us to demonstrate to the public what a great district we are, being fiscal responsible, and the way you manage everything with our finance data is incredible. And it doesn't get old from my standpoint. This is number six that I've heard. It's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Any comments from the public? I have no cards that are turned in for this public hearing, so we have no comment cards from the audience. The public hearing on the Schools First State of Financial Accountability Rating is now closed. Mr. Walter, thank you and your staff. Next, we'll go to Open Forum for Agenda Items. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. The segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on an item that is on the agenda tonight. It's not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply directly to the speaker. Dark and torrid comments, non-individual individuals will not be tolerated. Personal matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. I have one card this evening from our audience. When I call your name, Mr. Walton, please step to the podium, and you'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on, Ryan, the buzzer will sound, please end your presentation. Tonight, the card we have is from Mr. Ryan Walton, speaking over the Boundary Committee Agenda Item. Good evening, Ryan. How are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Trustees, appreciate the time. I also want to congratulate you on your recent award on Outstanding Board. That's quite an honor. Proud to be a product of Arlington Schools myself, Key, Gunn, and Martin, so very cool. With awards like that, though, come higher standards, unfortunately, I guess. So I want to talk a little bit about that tonight. Again, my name's Ryan Walton, live in Arlington, have three kids in AISD, own a business here, so I'm highly invested on what goes on here. So that's why I'm up here tonight. Recently, I was asked to be put on a committee to consider boundary for, I think you know what I'm talking about, the changes for Corey, Wood, and Moore. So three factions of parents there, obviously, the Wood, Moore, and Corey parents. And we were told that there was basically two options that were considered by the demographers. Option one was more of a contiguous boundary, and option two was a little bit different. It changed some stuff up, and we were asked to try to come to a consensus on option one or two. And we came to a semi-consensus on the first meeting, and were asked to then go out and conduct public forums at our respective schools. Take community input, take parental input, which we did. We have three and a half pages of input. Two and a half pages of it is from one school. And so when we reconvened 48 hours ago, we still couldn't come to a consensus. And the more parents seemed to have, no pun intended, more concerns than the other schools, two and a half pages worth. And again, the first time that I saw these concerns was 48 hours ago. I don't feel like these concerns have been addressed. I don't feel like they possibly could have been addressed. Mr. Hill, who did a great job, I think, of facilitating the process, because we kept pushing, more parents kept pushing. We like, number one, okay, but with these changes, just these minor changes, one looks good. He kind of said, it's kind of one or two. It's not one with changes. And I guess I was under the false assumption that being on that committee and going out to do public forums was to get input for prop one or two. And I felt like that it was already decided. It was one or two. So I guess I feel like, and our parents at Moore feel like we were, excuse me, put on a committee just to rubber stamp something through. I was under the impression that we're there to get input from our parents, that you guys would listen to that and consider it, all the changes, all the concerns, extra buses, all kinds of stuff, boundary lines that are changing that weren't supposed to change. I guess what I'm asking you to do is to listen to these concerns. If you guys have not, I don't know if you've seen it or not, and it's right here. There's three and a half pages of it, of concerns. I'd like to hear those addressed. I'd like to hear your opinion on them. I'd like to know what we're doing about this. I don't feel like it's been given credence. Just don't. So I'm asking you to table your vote on this until we can have more discussion. As far as I know, this doesn't take effect till next year. I don't know if that's correct or not, but we have time. I don't see the rush on getting this pushed through right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Next, we'll move to Action Items, part of the agenda. First, we'll consider proposed boundary changes for 2015-16 kindergarten students at Corey, impact on Wood and Moore, and then also boundary changes for 2015-16 Anderson, Crouch, Knox, Remensy, Roark, and Thornton as a result of construction of a new elementary school at Timber Oaks. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And as you know, we've been going through the boundary process for incoming Kinder students as we repurpose two elementary schools for dual-language fine arts academies. And then Timber Oaks will be opening, and so that is a boundary for East Arlington as well, some schools. So Michael Hill has been working with the Boundary Committee and the demographer to bring forth a proposal, so, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, President Hogg, Board members, and Dr. Kavassos. As mentioned earlier, we are in the process of going through the boundary change for the identified campuses. And so I'll take you through a timeline and that entire process that we've gone through at this point. But before I get started, if you would, I would like to take an opportunity to recognize the several campus administrators and parents and community members that have served on it. Total, we've had two committee meetings and several community forums, I think a total of eight over a span of about three weeks. And so if the committee members that were here, if you would, please stand and be recognized and appreciated. It was truly a great effort that the committee put forward. Again, tonight, we are here to basically ask for the proposed boundary changes for Corey incoming Kinder students impacting Wood and Moore elementaries, and for the proposed boundary changes for Timber Oaks location impacting Anderson, Crouch, Remensy, Roark, Thornton, and Knox. We're asking for those boundaries to be approved, and I'll go through the process now. A little bit about the timeline. We came with an initial presentation in September. Then we had the community meetings, a following meeting in mid-October to gain permission to go out and have open forums. We did inform the community of those. Again, had the forums from October 21st through October 30th. November 3rd, as mentioned earlier, we did have a final meeting to consider the deliberations of the community feedback. And then if approved tonight, we were planning to send home those boundaries with letters tomorrow, if approved tonight, so. Here are just the dates for the community forums, dates and times. It was published through the campuses, sent letters home, and I think it was posted to most of the websites as well to get parent and community input. The current boundary at Wood, Corey, and Moore is presented here, and if you'll see, the blue area here is currently Corey Elementary. As mentioned, Corey will be turning into a dual-language fine arts academy, and that's the current boundaries. The proposed boundary is that we went, that we took before the community is here, and what this boundary does is it uses Green Oaks as a divider, basically Green Oaks. And so where you saw Corey in the blue here, we're just splitting Corey right down in this area right here, and this bottom half would go to Moore, and the top half would go to Wood. And then there's another adjustment right here also. So that's the proposed boundary for Corey, Wood, and Moore. Looking at the capacity, capacity of Corey Elementary, 990. Wood and Moore, you see the difference there. We're looking at the current enrollment for those campuses. I wanted to talk about the transfers that are in on those campuses right now because as a part of the boundary change process, we close schools to new transfers to those schools, and so that would show there. And what you'll see is a projected enrollment for those campuses next year. You'll see that the Corey Elementary has a projection of 627, and that is to include an approximate of 140 dual-language fine arts academy students. And then the other campuses, Wood and Moore, 658 and 764 respectively. And again, that's if the Corey boundary was split in half. There would be, history shows that they're about between 70 and 80 Kinder in Corey per cohort, and so if we split that in half, we would have roughly those amount of students going to each campus. Again, that is if the boundary on Green Oaks is split evenly. I'm sorry, if the attendees live evenly on either side of Green Oaks, then that's what we would anticipate. We did go out and get community feedback, and here are some of the items or the areas that the community really wanted us to consider or to take into consideration, and that's current transfers being honored. If you're in those schools on a transfer, we don't want to be moved out, okay? And so we took that. The community wanted to talk about the balance of enrollment, class ratios to remain the same, making sure that the campuses have the needed human resources. If there's a need for teachers, staff, whatever, assistant principals, or whatever the case may be on the campus, then the district is committed to making sure that they're staffed appropriate. There was a lot of issues with regard to traffic, or a lot of conversation with regard to traffic at some of the campuses and what this increase would potentially cause. And so we talked, you know, we've had that discussion. Special programs at the campuses, transportation, acceptance into the Corey Academy for the dual-language fine arts. And then current students, current Wood students being moved to Moore, that was another part of the deliberations that we had during, that was a part of the community feedback that we took in. And so what the administration is committing to is that we would continue to honor those current transfers, appropriate staffing. If the staffing is needed at the campus, then we will do that. And then we'll also work with the city to do the traffic study. I do have relationships with the city officials, and we do that around campuses right now. And so that would not be a problem for us to do that at these impacted campuses. Committee deliberations, one of the things that the committee was really concerned about was a potential sudden increase in enrollment at Moore Elementary. There was limited impact on the Corey campus. There were some concerns about the Corey parents, by the Corey parents, that says that, hey, our school, as we know it, will be going away. And so they were saying that it was really limited concerns or limited impact on that campus, and the same thing at Wood Elementary. There was a request from the There was a request from the community to have the Wood students not be rezoned to Moore. And if you will need me, I'll go back to show that actual on the map here in a second. And then the committee was very supportive of the Green Oaks divider line. And so they supported the plan with the exception of that one triangle, if you will, being moved to, from Wood to Moore. So administration recommendation, administration recommends the board approve the boundary as presented with no changes. Allow students currently zoned to Wood, as well as any siblings who are not in that area, continue to go to Wood, who are not in the school system, continue to go to Wood, and any students new to the identified area previously zoned to Wood be zoned to Moore. And the rationale behind this is, again, it provides one contiguous boundary. There's one contiguous boundary there. There is capacity at all schools involved. This proposal would not overpopulate any school. There is a possibility of more capacity at all of these schools with the application process for the dual-language fine arts academy. So we've got schools with capacity and potential for more capacity if those students were to be selected for the academies. We'll go into the Timber Oaks at this point. That was the second process that we went through. And again, here is the Timber Oaks boundary right here. One of the main issues in this proposal is that currently we have students who, if this, this is 360 here, we have students who are being bused because of a lack of really capacity in East Arlington. These students are being bused across 360, the blue to Roark. You've got Roark coming from one, two, three communities, and you've got Knox coming from this community, and you've got Thornton coming from this community, all being bused across 360. As you know, we will be opening, and it's under construction now, the new elementary at Timber Oaks location, which is right across the street from Crouch. And so here is the new proposed boundaries for East Arlington. The students that were being bused across that to attend these schools will now have the opportunity to attend the new elementary, along with some new boundary changes in there, again, to strike a balance in the school enrollment. Again, the capacity of all of these schools, as a result of the boundary lines, the capacity there is there, and all of the projected enrollments are within capacity at each campus. We did go to the community to get feedback. One of the items that was asked for from the community is access to the Timber Oaks location from the apartment complex. There's an apartment complex that shares that campus line, and so some of the parents wanted access. If we could work with the city and the apartment management and the district to provide access through so that they wouldn't have to walk around the front of the complex down the street, just a direct access. The community appreciated the temporary buildings going away, appreciated that students are receiving a good education. They were really appreciative of the education. And I must, I want to pause and say this. As we went through all of these different communities and forums and things of that nature, what I was, and I told the committee, one of the things that I was really proud of is that not one time did we hear about the quality of education that was going to be received at the school. That was not a concern, because it's a quality education with the district that we provide. And again, they were concerned about the impact on the teaching staff, again, that commitment that we have that we're going to appropriately staff the building, and a true relief to Crouch Elementary, that's a true relief. And so if you'll see here in the projections, Crouch has a capacity of 821, and we're having it projected at 750 students. Administration commitments to work with the apartment complex management and the city of Arlington, if needed, to consider that possible access, appropriate staffing, and to move the pre-K from Crouch to Timber Oaks, because they have the capacity to do it, and that would help us get Crouch Elementary truly within their capacity. Committee deliberations, it was not much from that committee. They said that we should approve the boundary changes as presented with the commitments from the administration. One of the things that I wanted to talk about is that when we had our last committee meeting, there were some that couldn't make it. And so in an effort to make sure that I got true input from all of them, I did reach out to some that couldn't make those meetings over the last couple of days, and I've got their input, and it's been added into this presentation. And so administration recommends approving, approval of the boundary as it is presented for the two different locations. And the rationale, again, is the boundary provides for relief and overcrowding of the impact of schools. The proposed boundary eliminates the use of many portable buildings, just a couple for the rationale. And at this point, I'll entertain any questions that there may be.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Pena.
Well, looking at the capacity enrollment for the schools, I'm not understanding the concern of the Moore parents, because it shows that their current enrollment is 670 students, and it's going to lower to 658 students. So even with the transfers, the enrollment will be less than what they currently have. And so it's well below the capacity of that building. And so I'm going to ask a question that is probably not something that anybody else wants to bring up, but I'm going to. Is the problem the apartments?
When talking with the committee, the issue or the concern that they have is that the potential of an increase of student population at any given time from the apartments.
Okay.
It was, the more we got into it, the conversation wasn't about the apartments as much as it was about the potential for an unknown and untimely increase in student population.
From the apartments?
From the apartments, yes.
All right. Those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. Mr. Hibs.
So the total, as the breakdown goes, it would be thirty-eight approximately going to, from Corey that would go to Wood, thirty-eight that would go to Moore. Is the approximate breakdown, is that correct?
That is, and how I landed on that number is I looked at the five-year history of incoming kindergarten classes at Corey, because those are the students that are being rezoned. And over the past five years, that's been an average of around seventy-eight to eighty students. And so if Corey were to split in half, right down Green Oaks, if half of those students, it's just a projection that half of them lived here and the other half lived here, then that's where that number came from.
Okay. And in all three school zones, any of those children that would be incoming kinder can apply for the academy?
That's correct.
So the number could be skewed just based on that.
That's possible.
There'll be some, potentially, some Corey students that have maybe older brothers and sisters that will continue through until they graduate out of Corey. Your parents may choose to try to get them enrolled in the school itself.
That's correct.
Okay. Specifically from that little quadrant that we're talking about, number of incoming kindergartners on any given year, do you know what that number would be?
And so what we did, we have a way to go into our system and look at that. And just currently, there are eighty-one students that are living in that area that attend Arlington ISD schools. Of those eighty-one, there are six that have attached siblings, meaning I've got an older sibling in one grade, and now I've got, you know, a pre-Ker that's coming in. The impact that this boundary would have on Moore next year, based on current numbers, is three students. So there are three pre-K students that live in here that are unattached. That means that they have no siblings in Wood already that would be zoned to go to Moore.
Okay. A number of those students also go over from maybe some of the other complex a little bit further down, I'll feed into Miller, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and when you say unattached, since that has fed into Wood right now, their siblings are probably at Wood?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So there's a total of three, and on average, do we, for incoming kinders, is what I'm talking about specifically right now. Next year, it would be kinder first grade. So it would potentially three this year. Has our trend been three to five, three to fifteen? What do you think that trending line is?
I didn't look at it that, at that angle.
Okay. But for next year specifically, it's three?
It's three, yes.
Okay. Let me ask you something. Mary Moore, I know that Ms. Pena mentioned that the numbers go from 670 down to 658. Will the CEES program continue at Moore next year?
We are, we haven't gotten to a place where we're gonna, we made a decision on if there are going to be any program moves, but that's something that we were going, that we will consider, just not at Moore, but across the district, and that's program placement.
Okay. And the increase for Wood, they're going to acquire the thirty-eight new students that we're just saying that in this new mapping, it's going to be the thirty-eight incoming kindergartners. That's going to be the only gain that Wood sees they're not going to be picking up. I think there's a trade, one location that's in the Corey zone that will go specifically to Wood. So the net gain for Wood itself is only thirty-eight.
That's correct. That's the projection. Again, this academy, it's a phase-in stage, and we're only starting with the kindergarten. And so this year, we're only phasing or re, these attended zones will only affect incoming kinder students to Corey. So those are the students that are being dispersed to Wood and Moore.
With, at Wood right now, I've been on the board for five years, going into sixth year, I haven't heard that there's been any issues specifically with students from any sector, that there's any issues with people that live on the north side of Green Oaks based, you know, to those on the south side. There's, we don't have any specific issues with any type of delinquency or behavioral problems, anything that, like that comes into play.
Not, that's been brought to our attention. I've talked with the campus administration, and that has not been discussed.
We're pretty confident there?
Yes.
There's, you know, the biggest unknown here that I see is just how many parents from those three schools will actually apply for the fine arts dual-language academy. You know, because that's the only thing that truly can skew these numbers if we're going to go ahead and, you know, put a cap on any type of transfers. I'd like to know the thoughts from the rest of the board members, if there's something that I'm missing that could be a potential problem with the zoning. You know, I understand that as, you know, you change boundaries, there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of fear that could come part of it. You know, I've, I live in a, the sector down that feeds to Miller, and I remember the change there, and I think that affects several hundred children. And, you know, there was, there was a lot of unknowns there, because there's, I think, six apartment complexes that feeds into that, to that school alone. And, you know, as far as content of education and quality, I haven't seen that there be any diminishment there. But, you know, I do want to make sure that we're covering, you know, any, you know, if there's any potential miss that we're, that I'm not seeing, I would love for somebody else to give me your thoughts and fill in.
Thank you, Mr. Hibs and Ms. Mays.
Thank you. Also, being a parent that lived in the area when my students were, or my children were in elementary school, lived in an area where there was rezoning, and it is difficult. Change is just difficult period. So, one, I appreciate the parents that serve on the committee, appreciate their willingness to offer the information that they feel is important, because it is our community. I also appreciate the district wanting to have a committee and listen to the feedback that they have to make sure that we, as a group, for our children, the main thing we want to do is make sure that when the boundaries are done, everyone is in a safe, secure environment and getting a good education no matter where they are. So, but with that being said, I do have a couple of questions. The community feedback, thank you for putting that together. I was looking at then the administrative commitments. Am I assuming that these commitments came back from taking the feedback that the committee brought forward?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. Then, one bullet point here, transportation. What was the feedback from the community about transportation?
There was the concern that the process that we have for the students who live in that area continuing at Moore, I'm sorry, at Wood, that they would, I mean, and those parents wanted to stay at Wood and just go ahead and graduate, if you will, from there. And so any new students in that area would be, we would have to provide transportation from that area to Moore, as well as from that area to Wood. And that was one of the issue with the transportation.
Okay. And is that an issue? Because I don't see that as part of the commitment.
Well, and, I'm sorry.
I was, I'm assuming that if someone did decide that they wanted to go out, that they would have transportation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And there was some conversation about the financial impact of transportation. And so we internally with finance and the transportation department did look at that. And the overall transportation budget, the students being transported from the area that we're discussing to Moore, it would have no impact on the overall transportation budget. However, specifically, and we calculated that today, it's about $5,300 per year to transport those students from that area to Moore. So we're looking at a potential, not really increase in the overall budget, because we would absorb some. Again, on the other side of town where we're closing, I'm sorry, we're combining these schools, we've got three buses right now that we take from this side of 360 over to Rockmore and to these other Thornton and Knox that we would take offline. And so it would almost more than cover, you know, the taking off of these three routes, and if we had to add one for that area, so.
Okay. So the concern brought up then was dollars. Is there a concern for, obviously, if that's the case that you just said, there's not a concern of not having enough buses if we were to need transportation from one place to another?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my other question is, for the question that was asked about the apartments, once that did come up as a concern, were there any studies or anything to see if anything trended that way from that area within like the last five or 10 years? Did we at least look at it to see that there was any particular time where that situation actually happened?
No, we didn't. But what we did look at was that in this whole area with the impact of these three schools, the projections that Templeton has given us, and it's held true over the past five years, is that we see a decline or decrease in actual student enrollment in that area. Right now, there are, at one of the campuses, anywhere from four to six classrooms not being used. And then at another one, there are eight to 10 classrooms that are sitting empty right now with the appropriate spaces for the programs that are there, as well as the students that are there. And so that's one of the things that we did study. As well as, I did, due diligence, I think, in calling the apartment complex over the last couple of days, and just had a very candid conversation with the apartment management about, you know, what were their concerns about turnover rate and things of that nature. And so they didn't really have any major concerns about it, said that their attendance were pretty stable, so.
And then just a what-if, for the first time ever in history, something like that does happen, do we? do we have a contingency plan to make sure that it would not be disruptive in any one of these scenarios?
That is, our contingency plan would be that at, at the campus where they're, you know, zoned to go right now, we feel that there is capacity at the campus to hold it. So, again, with eight empty classrooms, and, and I'm just saying eight on the low end, that would be if they're all, let's just say it's an average of twenty per class, you know, that's a hundred and sixty students that would have to come into that area that would be zoned to that class before we had any, wait a minute, what are we gonna do here?
Right, right. Okay, and then, so, thank you. And I guess a question that's just looming in my mind that I, I want to ask, so if you're able to answer it. If we were to approve anything, I know that myself and my colleagues here feel very important that anything that comes from a committee is something, that we have all the facts before we actually vote on it. So, then I would ask, is there any other concern that may have been voiced that's not included on here that came out of the committee?
What I, what I've tried to capture here were the, were the big, big rocks, if you will. I do have the, the item-by-item, line-by-line concerns that were brought forward. I, I think they're, the current, the concerns are either brought out here and/or addressed by the commitments that, that administration has made.
Okay. Then my, my last question then would be for the citizens within that committee that had concerns, have their, have at least their concerns been addressed?
Yes.
Even if they weren't accepted, they've been addressed as to the reasoning? There was dialogue?
Yes, ma'am. We had, we had much deliberation.
Okay. Then, my comment, not a question, for the community feedback on our other location for Timber Oaks, working with the apartment complex management and the city to consider the possibility of access. I'm kind of familiar with that area, so I guess the only thing that, that I would want to make sure happens, and I'm sure even the parents that, even though it might be easier to come through that way, that we're not giving up safety for our students by adding that there. So, I'd just like to make that comment. And my last comment is, yes, I agree with the parents when they say, thank you, we appreciate those temporary buildings going away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays, Mr. Hibs.
Mr. Hild, I've got another question that popped up in my mind a second ago. Okay, scenario, we've got a fifth grader this year at Wood. He has a incoming kindergarten brother next year, one of the transfers. So, the, so, from that one sector, you've got a fifth grader, that's currently at Wood, no other siblings. And then at, you have a incoming kindergartner. So, the, the boy will be a sixth grader next year, the kindergartner will, well, obviously will be kindergarten. That child will be able to go to Wood?
That's correct.
So, so there's, so no parent, I guess, when does that wean out? After you get to the kindergartner finally getting to, to sixth grade?
Yes.
And Mr. Hibs, that should be under, and Mr. Hill, correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't mind, that should be under the tran, the sibling transfer policy. That if one sibling is already there, they'd be allowed to transfer in, except in the case of if there may be a fifth grader at Corey, they wouldn't be able to transfer in as kindergarten. But if there's one sibling there, the other sibling can automatically transfer in.
And the only clarification on that is that, using that same scenario about an incoming kinder that would still go to Wood because their brother's in fifth grade, going sixth grade. If that incoming kinder, the parents want to apply for the Dual Language Fine Arts Academy, then they could, and if that student was accepted, they wouldn't necessarily, their sibling wouldn't come to Corey. Because it's only incoming kinder by application. So, that, just for that clarification, they may be split because one goes to Wood, the other one decides to go to Corey because they're in the dual language.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah, I understood that. I, I just wasn't sure what the cycle would be because we, we were saying we're honoring the, the children that's already at Wood. You know, for what point is that a automatic? I mean, you know, if, if a family has three generations of children, some families do that, are they real spread out? I mean, do they continue until they run the course, you know, of all the kids in the school?
And that's, that's, again, if, if, as long as that, that kinder has a sibling that's in Wood, that incoming kinder has a sibling in Wood, then they stay in, in that Wood pattern. It could be a two-year-old now and a second grader. And by the time that second grader gets to fifth grade, now that two-year-old is, is four or five going in, and so they would stay in the pattern. The three that I'm talking about that live in that area right now, that's when they start to go to Moore, is when they have no connection to Wood at all. The, the, these precares, the, the three students that we talked about that are in our system right now, they have no connection, no siblings at, at Wood. And so, that's when they would start to go to Moore.
Okay. I noticed that Wood actually has, or not Wood, Moore actually has the highest transfer. They have two-hundred-and-eighty-six transfers.
Yes.
Are all these transfers, obviously, they're not in that boundary.
Right.
These kids are coming from all over, that could be potentially all over the city.
That's correct.
And for, some of them may be for program sake.
That's correct.
For CEES. Okay, I want to make sure that that's clear.
Yes.
But for that, you've got the two-hundred-and-eighty-six, it's, it's one of the largest set of transfers, I think, of any, any particular school. Do we, is it, is there any other reasons that they were transferring in to, to Moore besides potentially, you know, a program, say such as CEES?
Well, they do have the program, but again, all of our campuses, with the exception of the ones that are closed to transfers for boundary changes or closed because of capacity, I mean, that, that's, that's school of choice that we have. And, and if there is capacity and there's no boundary change, then you can transfer in. And that's across the district.
Okay, so that's what I was just wanting to have clarified, is that the open try, boundary process is allowed for children to be, to transfer in, and, and they're transferred in without any type of necessarily, there's no screening that we take and say, we choose this one and not choose this one. It's been basically, as long as you meet the requirements of our transfer program, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. That's correct.
Okay, so, I think that's the last question I have. I just wanted, just to make sure that I, I was clear on that. How about for those transfers that are currently there, we said that they would be able to finish?
That's correct, yes.
Their siblings?
Yes. If, if they're in the school on a transfer, then we'll still honor the sibling transfer. If they're in Moore on a transfer, yet Moore is closed to transfers, the sibling transfer is in policy that we would honor that.
Okay.
Because again, we want to try to keep families together.
I just want to make sure it's clear. So, if I, I've been picking on Miller, that's just because that's where my kids grew up. But if a, if there's a sixth, a fifth grader will be next sixth year, sixth grade next year at Moore, but a transfer from Miller, that child's, even though it's closed, that child, because of the sibling process, will have the ability to transfer in.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, I, I just want to make sure that all these questions were answered and it's clear because I know that we'll have those questions a little bit further on. Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Hibs. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Mr. Hill, does, let's look at Corey Woodmore, that's the one that's at issue here. Does the proposed boundary change significantly change the makeup of the demographics or socioeconomic makeup of the school?
And that question came up during the deliberations, if you will. We didn't look at demographics or anything of that nature to develop the boundaries, but we did look at it after the boundaries were developed.
Right, what did you find?
And it didn't tilt it one way or another, any, any different than it was, than it already was, within a little bit, one way or another.
And then for both of the proposals, this one at East Arlington, do any of the schools change their feeder patterns?
No, sir.
So, if a child right there is in a feeder pattern to go to one junior high, he's still going to go to that junior high?
That's correct. These, 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 these boundary changes had zero impact on feeder patterns beyond the elementary level.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, Dr. Esh.
Thank you, President Hogg. I, with all the questions that the colleagues of mine have asked, I feel pretty comfortable, really, with this. It, it's very odd that, that little segment of apartments, all these years, has been split and jumps an attendance zone to Wood. I, I don't understand that, that obviously predates probably all of us up here. It's very strange that that's the, the way it is, but this obviously will form more of a consistent boundary. I, I think that's ultimately better. I, I guess one of the things that I want to make certain of, from a committee standpoint, the, the term rubber stamp was brought up, and I want to go through our timeline. I want to make sure that maybe there wasn't miscommunication or false expectation. I think you've been around long enough to know that I'm a committee process stickler, and I, I want to make sure that what, that we're setting the right expectation, the right tone out there, and that the committees feel that they, they are valuable. And I think they're valuable, I think this information is great. But I, I do want to address, on the September sixteenth timeline, that was the committee meeting to review parameters and draft boundaries. So, that essentially was the, the first committee meeting. The, there, there were already two recommendations at that point from the demographer, is that correct?
The demographer did give us two options, yes.
And the one with the, the Moore, Wood, Corey situation is the option one that our parents spoke of earlier?
They gave us two options for Moore, Wood, Corey. And what, what we chose was, was option one.
Was option one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I, I guess I, I just, just to make certain that the expectations are clearly communicated, that, that perhaps maybe the, the idea in their minds was that we'd have ability to, you know, tweak these boundary lines a little bit or something like that, or if there was something, which I think maybe was more of the intent, was to find out if there were really big disparaging problems that a demographer wouldn't be aware of and that we needed input to find out about, that would maybe then really cause something to shift as far as a boundary line. And that, to me, seems like what the actual charge was for the committee, would that be correct?
That's correct. And again, the, the demographers were at this meeting, and they had the software to move a boundary and look what, and see what that did to the, to the balance of the schools and things of that nature. The concern that came out of this meeting was the same concern that we're discussing tonight. And so, what we discussed in this meeting, because initially, there was some conversation that this area that we're discussing, that all eighty-one of these students would, at this point at approval, be moved to Moore.
Next year.
Next year, that they would not have the option to go. And so, as we processed through committee, that's where we landed, is that if they're in Moore, I'm sorry, if they're in Wood, that they would remain in Wood.
Right.
And, and that's, that was a sticking point before we even brought, brought it to you, to, to have that consideration. And so, we cleared that up with, with the committee prior to bringing it to the board.
Okay. And, and obviously, we don't know what the impact of the, the Fine Arts Academy registrations enrollment would be. That is, that is a big, a big unknown. Did, did we look at the projections post-five, six years down the road? And I guess Ms. Mays kind of alluded to that, so maybe not. As far as the, that density, say that, that eighty number, would that hold? Would that be continuous even after that six-year mark? And if so, it's still within, well within the capacity of what Moore can handle, so. Okay, yeah. I guess the only other thing that I, I would ask as far as committee process, so, two nights ago, two days ago, had a meeting, and there was disagreement. How, how did you come, was there a vote by the committee? Was there so many yays and nays, or what, or was it just mayhem? I mean, what, tell us, tell us about it.
It, it was not mayhem.
Okay, good.
I didn't think so, I'm just, just asking.
We don't, we try not to operate in mayhem. We didn't come to a yes, no, yes, no. We came to a Corey table, give me your feedback on this. Wood table, give me your feedback on this. Moore table, give me your feedback on this. And I captured all of that feedback, and that's what is either addressed in the administrative commitments or that, that you, that have been presented tonight.
Okay. Okay. It's a difficult process. Well, I, I, you've answered my questions, my colleagues have asked some, some great questions. I, I think ultimately, what, what I see here is, is a very good balance. I, I don't, for me personally, I mean, it depends on the, the will of the board, but I, I don't see that we're being shorted information. As, you know, Ms. Mays kind of alluded to, it seems like you've covered all the bases. I'm not going to make a motion, this is a discussion action item. I'm willing to support it if somebody else wants to. I'm willing to table and look at other additional information as well and do it next time. But I think this is, is, I'm pretty comfortable with it, so.
Thank you, Dr. Esh. No other lights, Mr. Hild has had one or two quick questions. I, I think everyone brings up the good point, the variable we don't know is the academy students that will go in there. Won't we know that in the springtime?
We will know, yes.
Approximately April or May, correct?
Right, by the end of the year, we hope to have the approvals of who gets approved to go and who doesn't.
So, we'll have a little more accurate determination of that. My concern is, with these schools all having capacity, if you have one year where you don't open transfers, are you going to have a dip in those numbers for that year? And then it affects our teaching numbers and our ratios throughout the year? And, and that comes into play then on the transferring of teachers if they're not achieving certain numbers, and I don't want to be moving teachers. So, is there consideration of, after that, may, maybe reopening to transfers?
Certainly can.
That's, yes.
I, I mean, you see what I'm saying, any of these schools here and the east side, when you close the transfers, if you, or feel confident, I, I understand why we close them to transfers. We don't want all of a sudden overcapacity, and then we're having to move other teachers in. But if you have that dip, and especially in this, maybe the south part is a little more, and some on the east, if we, if we open them after we're more confident, or maybe even a late transfer, you know, first week of school, something like that.
I think that's certainly a possibility, and also with Corey, as even the upper grade levels are going to benefit from foreign language, not the dual language, but other programs that they may be interested in transferring in, other, other.
I've talked to many of the kindergarten parents at Corey to explain how much benefit they'll still have, being, they won't officially be the academy, but they'll be in the school with the academy. So, I think that's a big benefit. I, I would ask us to consider, and Mr. Hill, the question I always ask on transfers, any transfer is always allowed to be considered by the superintendent and his staff, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Always like to make sure that question's there. For the transportation cost, that will only be about a five-year cost as we transfer for the, that one little section where we have buses going, picking up from those here, and it, you estimate that at about fifty-three hundred dollars a year.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
But then there's some savings on some other areas. Gotcha. Last thing I would say, the numbers are low on all these for capacity, so I'm good with that. I think on any time we draw boundaries, no one ever says it's fun, Mr. Hill, we know that. No board likes to ever tackle boundaries, and if you could leave them, you always would. But sometimes you have to make those adjustments, and I think they're the proper thing to do. I always look and say, does it pass the eye test on the boundaries? We're not Congress, I'm not going to gerrymander lines like our congressional folks like to do. And so, Mr. Hild, I think this passes the eye test, and I'll take that. So, at this time, I'd be more than willing to accept a motion.
Well, I've been quiet, so. A really good conversation from the board and the community, and Mr. Hill as well, appreciate all of that. And thinking about this over time, and the number of times I've, other committees have talked about the, the issue of this non-contiguous borders has come up many times in the past. And so, it, and then that and the capacities there, I would think that apartment and students, the number of students that are generated from multifamily, let's say, we, we should know a lot about that. It should be inherent in our demography because apartments are nothing new to Arlington. These apartments, I don't believe are new, and, you know, there are significant number of apartments in Arlington ISD, so we have an idea of what. so we have an idea of what kind of numbers to expect. So, of course, after listening to all the conversation, again, thank you to my colleagues. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the proposed boundary changes for the 2015, 2016 incoming kindergarten students and students to the Cory community. This change will have an impact on boundaries at Wood and Moore Elementarys. And also, proposed boundary changes for 2015, 2016, and beyond for Anderson, Crouch, Knox, Remensey, Rourke, and Thornton Elementarys as a result of the construction of a new elementary school located at Timber Oaks.
I have a motion by Ms. Solins. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Barron. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven trustees present, seven trustees voting in the affirmative. Mr. Hill, and to all the citizens, thank you for all your work. We know it's never an easy process. We never make everyone happy, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to action item B, consider extension of superintendent term contract. In discussion in multiple meetings, we've discussed, we have a new contract to extend for our superintendents at this time. I'd like to make a motion for us, as a board, to consider extension and new contract of superintendent term contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by myself, and then a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Perfect. Dr. Kavassos, we got you till 2017 at least. So thank you so much, sir. Congratulations. Thank you so much, and thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the students of the AISD. It's well deserved, and we're very proud to call you our superintendent here in the district. At this time, Ms. Jenkins, or anyone else in the back from the Star Telegram, we always will be releasing a press release with some details from that contract. Thank you so much, Dr. Kavassos. Next, we'll move to discussion action item, consider revision of board policy, CW Local, naming facilities. At this time, I think it is coming from committee, so I will pass it to Ms. Solins.
Thank you, President Hogg. We had a great conversation during the dinners meeting this evening, and had a good opportunity for all the board members to, at that time, to offer some insight and thought. So the committee would like to take this back and take another look before we bring it back out this evening. Thank you.
Perfect. It is a discussion action, so we don't have to table it. We can just move it on, and we will look at that, I am assuming, for the December meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. November 20th or December. We will let the committee work on timelines, and we'll get that on the next agenda. Next, we'll move to consent items. Are there any items to be drawn from consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, Ms. Powell, you're up.
Thank you. I think we need to change the PowerPoint. Working on it. Hang on, just, while he's getting the...
One mess up at the computer throws the whole night off.
Yeah, and I think, my apology, I think we have had the donations displayed earlier, so I think we're good with this. We have five bids on the agenda this evening, and in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids, and the bids representing the best value for the district. Our donations that we're presenting for your consideration this evening total $110,250, which brings our year-to-date total to $262,480.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Powell, and as always, thank the community for those amazing numbers that keep impressing us year after year. At this time, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pena, a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present, all trustees voting in the affirmative. Thank you so much, Ms. Powell, and thank you, the community, for all your donations. Next, we'll move to discussion item, first quarterly review of 2014-15. I love seeing familiar faces out there to review the action plans for Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow Strategic Plan. Dr. Kavassos, and you're our favorite.
Elaine Say is here to review our quarterly action plans, and so Elaine, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. President Hogg, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos says it's good to be back. I love this weather. Best thing to come out, and it's cool, but not humid, so that's great. The quarterly report covers the timeframe from July to September. So the first quarter, starting in July, going through the end of September. Because we're reporting now in November to you, some of these things are going to seem like pretty old news, because they're pretty old news. And typically, we report kind of the month after, so we're just reporting slightly later due to, I don't know why, I forgot why, but for whatever. Yeah, so we'll jump in here if I can push the right button. As you know, the quarterly review is just a piece of the way we look at the long-range plan. We look at whether the plans that have been developed by the district are implemented on schedule. And then, because if they're not, then we can't expect to see the progress on the measures that the district has selected. Some of the action plans were modified after, or during the process of the review process. And some of those modifications included making slight changes to completion dates, and in a couple of cases, adding some activities that weren't initially in the mix, but that needed to be in there. So just a couple of modifications at the end of the first review. And so what I'm going to do is go through, as we typically do, through inspired learners first, and go through those goals. And just to give you highlights, remember, these are just highlights, because if you look at the complete set of action plans, you'll see in the status column, all of the detail of the work that staff has done to accomplish those activities that were scheduled. In terms of MPE, we've, of course, added more schools, so there's a total of 16 campuses that are in the MPE process and have earned autonomies. And the criteria was changed to give a little more emphasis to the TEA distinction. So the criteria was modified, and the result was schools from last year, schools added for a total of 16. The instructional model is well underway in Phase 1. Training for administrators was held in the summer, and for the teachers in the 15 elementary pilot schools. In terms of On Track to Graduate, which is part of the accountability strategy, dealing with accountability, that dashboard, the first version, was developed by the end of September and presented to the steering committee and for their review. And I'm sure it's, you know, in a whole different phase now. Anxious to see what that's looking like, because that's a very exciting project. In terms of the second goal, higher education and career education, the personal graduation plans have been implemented, counselors have been trained. All the high schools and grade seven students have their PGPs, and they were developed in Google Docs. After first, you know, trying a couple of other software, they finally determined that Google Docs would accommodate that best. Eighth graders will actually develop their PGP in their eighth-grade course. In terms of higher education, the student certification, the courses that students take, the CTE courses, where they can earn certifications. For this year, we, starting this year, students will be required to take the certification exams in those courses that lead to certification, with the fees being paid by the district. One of the partnerships with Lockheed was started on schedule, and five student interns are working with Lockheed. And from the description and the discussion of the staff, it appears that that project's going extremely well. GM Foundation is providing support for the district, and the CTE folks, the GM Foundation folks have been working with a Lamar Robotics team and helping them get prepared for the first tech challenge. So that work is underway. New programs, the Early College High School implemented, as of the end of September, 122 students were enrolled. The Police Academy has been implemented on schedule. And then a lot of work in the planning and design of, for the STEM Academy that is in conjunction with UTA, and the Fine Arts Academy that's in conjunction with North Texas. And so, and I think one thing that's important about that work is that the district has its high-level staff, and the universities have their high-level staff working in this process. So it's, I think it's got the attention of both groups. Goal four, and everybody's been a busy bee in this area for sure. All the work around the bond projects, and I know you're obviously extremely familiar with it, with architectural firms, being contracts awarded to them, development of the educational specifications for the specialized programs that are in the first phase, the actual bond authorization for the first hunk of money to go to the bond work. And then the RFQs issued for construction and contractors. And then the Bond Oversight Committee, that you've appointed members, 11 regular members and some alternates. And then the work of the boundary committees, I don't think we need to say anything more about that. We just talked about that. But the next step after that boundary committee work is, the work will start, the planning process has already started in terms of the staff transitions that result from that boundary, those boundary changes. Also, in terms of Goal Four, they're working to modify the budgeting process for state comp ed money and Title I funding. And they've had initial set of meetings with some tentative recommendations, and they're going forward with those. In terms of the custodial function, they've issued an RFQ for work to review those custodial functions, and so we'll see that work progressing. Similar in maintenance functions and customer service training. Actually, the Harris County Department of Ed has been selected to do the maintenance functions, to do that work. And HCD will also provide the customer service training. Goal Five, Safe and Secure Environment. The district, for the first time last year, surveyed multiple grade levels, rather than just surveying exiting seniors, they surveyed fifth graders, eighth graders, and 10th graders. Did I get that right? I think I did. Yeah. And so, all principals at all levels now have the student survey results to look at. And they had a training that Gibson provided to study those results for their campuses and learn how to interpret those results and use those results in their planning. In terms of PBIS, the district has three discipline specialists that are working with the campuses, with the PBIS teams on campuses. Those campus teams were formed, and they have received training. And each campus will develop their school-wide behavior expectations. And then they'll start implementing those behavior expectations. And all the status of their implementation at each school, because it may not all occur on the same timeline, will be tracked internally so that we can be sure that all that work occurs as it is scheduled. Also, in Inspired Learners, Goal Ten, Highly Effective Teachers, the academic checks are in place at the elementary level. The unpacking of the TIC standards has been initiated at secondary schools. The second grade standards-based report card has, those have already come out, obviously. And then probably one of the bigger pieces of Goal Ten is the professional development piece. And the new person in that role has started the needs assessment process. And as of the end of September, that process wasn't entirely complete, but you can see here that they've met with not only instructional but non-instructional departments to collect data, to look at current practices, to see where there's gaps. And so that needs assessment process will then go into the next stage of development of the professional development approach for the district. Then we move into Effective Leadership, Goal Three, Staff Retention and Support. Just like campuses are using the student results, the departments and campuses are also using the results from the employee engagement surveys conducted last spring. And those people, the principals and other administrators that are responsible for using this data, that are in new roles, now have a different set of expectations. In other words, they don't have to basically use whatever the prior leader of that campus, what their results said, and they have a new way and a new system, not system, but a new approach to developing their work around the engagement surveys. Another big area is the performance pay and appraisal system. An RFQ was implemented or sent out, and two responses were received, and those responses reviews started by the end of September. The HR department is reorganizing to provide a focus on some areas that are in the long-range plan in terms of culture recognition, succession planning. The work has started on validation of the teacher screening instrument. And there was a pilot of digital interview software that was conducted at two sites in the district, and they were analyzing, at the end of September, analyzing those results. Goal Eight, Customer Service and Culture of Integrity. Of course, the wellness program was adopted, the vendor was adopted, and the staff and HR conducting weekly status meetings with the vendor to work on development and implementation of that program. Also, the parent and student surveys from last year are being used, or were used by the principals in developing either the needs assessment or specific strategies in their campus improvement plans. Some campuses, especially like an elementary, since this is the first time they've had their feedback from students, then they, you know, sort of new to that process, so they may not have developed a specific strategy for that yet, but it's included in their needs assessment. Goal Nine is Leadership Development. Of course, we have the Emerging Leaders Program that replaced the aspiring principals and assistant principals. They have hit the ground running, so to speak, and their instructional focus has been on data and rigor in conducting academic PLCs with teachers. So they've really jumped right in on the instructional issues. In terms of the scorecard, in the development of the scorecard and that process, input was obtained from principals, area superintendents, the DI DC people that we saw here earlier tonight, and curriculum staff. So there's more input on the scorecard this year, and training has been provided to the senior leadership, and probably by now already to the principals. And especially on the new pieces of monitoring the progress of the scorecard and the strategic initiatives in the scorecard. Engage Community, the third section of the district's plan, long-range plan. Goals Six and Seven deal with parent and community engagement. We sort of combine them in terms of this reporting, because they're so similar in focus. But Aaron is conducting bimonthly professional development meetings with a Title I campus, family engagement liaisons, so working closely with those folks. Parent University will be the second year of implementation, with three parent university sessions to be offered. One, obviously, was already conducted in October, but another plan for January, and then end of the year in May. There is a program system to track the volunteer hours, and that system was nearing completion as the end of September. And I know Aaron's doing work around a community partnership program development and has developed the protocols for participation. And so that process will be developed throughout this semester and put into place. Goal Eleven, Communications. The reports, the State of the District Report has been developed and printed and posted and so forth, the annual report, which you heard in September has been finalized. We were able to, because some of the SAT data wasn't arrived in the district at the time we had the report, we've since been able to pull that information... the time we had the report, we've since been able to pull that information in to the annual report, make those modifications, and so it's now in its final stages. Fact sheets have been prepared in all of the areas that are listed here, and probably one of the, the bigger issues is the develop, hiring a communications consultant to help audit the communications, brand awareness, and effectiveness, and so that work is, has
Thank you, Ms. Say.
Welcome.
At this time, any questions from colleagues? Ms. Say, I'll ask one on that PBIS. I had some questions, is that fully implemented into our, our staff so that it can report and do all that?
Yeah, and Phase One is, is there, I think Michael has more information on that, but the setting the campus expectations, that's Phase One, and that's what they're working on, the committees?
So, setting campus expectations, and then from a technology standpoint, is it connected in?
With regard to reporting?
Reporting, yeah.
At this point, it, it's not integrated into the technology, but we, we do have reporting systems whereby we monitor where each campus is with regard to their, their implementation.
Eventually, that's going to be part of our data dashboard, but that's not Phase One. Phase One is On Track to Graduation.
Okay, gotcha. That, that makes sense, that's fair. I, I know there's phases, I'm, I'm an impatient person, but I know we have, I know we have to go by phases, so I'll take that, so. Any further discussions from colleagues? Ms. Say, I feel like we just saw you, so.
Okay, well, I hope to see you again.
We will, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to open forum for non-agenda items. We don't have any cards this evening, so we'll move to superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and I'd like to share some information about our district. State Representative Diane Patrick held a very successful and informative educational summit that many of you all were able to attend, I think all of the board members were able to attend, and I want to thank Diane Patrick for, and her district director, Ann Morris, for spearheading this event. A lot of demonstration by our students and our staff, very, very successful. Corey Elementary 4th grade students had a wonderful afternoon recently with special guests from the Dallas Cowboys. They were able to, the players spent more than an hour together as part of the Fuel Up to Play 60, and you see that they presented a check for $2,500 to the, for a hometown huddle. Very excited at Corey when that event was happening, the students were very much engaged. Many of our schools recognized Breast Cancer Awareness Month and also participated in Red Ribbon Week during October, and so you see some of the pictures there, that's one of our principals there at Workman, and we saw a lot of spirit on this, these two events, so I think that's important to recognize. Two weeks ago marked a very significant occasion for the Fire Academy, our AISD Fire Academy, as four members of the first class of the Fire Academy were hired by the Arlington Fire Department and given their fire department pins at the ceremony. Congratulations to these fine young men, we look forward to seeing many more, they're now helping to recruit Fire Academy students, so very, very successful. Congratulations also goes out to Martin High School Symphony Orchestra and the Young Junior High Men's Choir, which you heard today. Martin Symphony Orchestra was named the 2015 High School String Honor Orchestra, and the Young Men Choir was named the Invited Performing Choir for Middle School for TMEA, the 2015 TMEA event, and so we look forward to sharing our success statewide with, with the rest of the state in, in terms of fine arts. Our collegiate high school students recently spent their Halloween School Day as a day of service. They helped Mission Arlington prepare for the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, you see all those boxes that, that will be filled at Mission Arlington for food for, for individuals, and I want to thank them for setting a, a very good example as they're the first class of this Arlington Collegiate High School. Halloween provided many opportunities for fun lessons in AISD, and you saw many pictures, I'm sure, on Facebook and all over the place. Starett Elementary and Adams each had a story, Character Day, West had a pumpkin launch contest, and you saw some pictures there. Mr. Hibbs and I enjoyed the Fall Aerobics at Corey Elementary, he's still excited about that, and so it was fun and all over the district, fantastic.
Here's a picture of your costume, Dr. Cavassos.
I don't have one.
Oh, okay.
When is the superintendent? They asked me that. At some point at the PDC, make, make it a point to stop by if you have a chance, our elementary art students, 4th through 6th grade, from all 52 elementary schools are being recognized for their artistic talents and art exhibition, and the PDC is a wonderful place to, to be able to walk around and see the artwork in, in a much more environment where you can look at it and, and really appreciate it. The display is going on through November 20th, showcasing 1st and 3rd grade art will begin November 21st. And last, but certainly not least, I hope you are, are ready to keep watching the season of Master Chef Junior, and Larson Elementary's own Jessica Stevens, a 6th grade student that you see there, was one of the contestants who was shown off her culinary skills, and we heard about culinary as one of our seniors here was participating in that program, and as we build the Career Tech Center, there'll be many more opportunities for culinary arts, so we want to congratulate Jessica and wish her the best of luck. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and I saw Jessica on Fox Morning News Show the other day cooking. She's, she's a natural on television, so. At this time, we'll go to school board reports. Ms. Mays.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I had an opportunity to attend the United Hispanic Council of Tarrant County banquet with a couple other of my colleagues, and I might say that I was very proud, our, the guest speaker at this event was Dr. Cavassos, and he made us proud as he always does, did a wonderful job. It was also good to hear a lot of the good that the council's doing as far as providing scholarships to students, and there were several students there that received some wonderful scholarships to great University of Texas A&amp;M. Also had an opportunity, as we all did, for the 8th Annual Education Summit, very, very proud of our Fine Arts Department, once again, just the continuous cycle of seeing our students perform with singing, dancing, stepping, just a variety of talent from our students. Also really enjoyed the setup for all of the different vendors, for the schools to show off the things that they do, and for everybody that was there and set up something to showcase what they do for the district, thank you, I thought it was great, I wish I could have just pulled people in off the street to just show all the wonderful things that are going on. And then lastly, Tuesday, I had an opportunity to attend the Junior High Football Championships at Craven Fields, and proud to announce that Young Junior High came in 3rd and Ausley 2nd, so congratulations to those junior high, and the junior high champion of this year is Barnett Junior High, shout out to my son Malcolm Mays if I can, and congratulations to Barnett and all the other people that participated, thank you.
You can, Ms. Mays, and who was the quarterback of that Barnett Junior?
That'd be Malcolm Mays. There's two quarterbacks, just a-
Oh, okay. Congratulations, Malcolm, congratulations, Mays family. Takes a lot to win a championship, I don't care what level, what league you're playing in or anything, to win a, a city championship or anything, that's a big thing, so it's a nice, nice honor for your son. Ms. Pena.
Okay, I also attended the Hispanic Advan, Council Meeting at TCC Trinity River Campus, and yes, of course, Dr. Cavassos did us proud. My husband attended the event, and he always likes the meals that they give, but he didn't eat until Dr. Cavassos finished speaking because he was so enthralled in what he said in his presentation about how he has evolved to be who he is, and his encouragement of students to never give up. In addition, I, and of course, there were the, Mr. Barron, Ms. Mays, and myself were there attending, and then I also attended the Boys and Girls Club Railway Private Vintage Train Trip with Mr. Hibbs and Ms. Keyes was, Ms. Mays was also there. Then the Education Summit with the, I think the entire board was there. Also attended the Mansfield AISD Legislation Meeting, Dr. Reich was there, myself, Mr. Hogg, and Mr. Barron. And then I, immediately after that, I went to Fall Into Reading at South Davis Elementary, and I had the opportunity to read the 3rd graders, and they were so awesome, and actually the teacher selected the book that I was to read so that it would fit into the curriculum, and I actually learned something from the 3rd graders, and you know, when you think you know everything, you don't, and the 3rd graders can teach you a lot. I also attended the Asian American Chamber Meeting, let's see, Dr. Cavassos was there, myself, and Mr. Barron. Okay, you didn't make it, right, okay, and that was, that is such thing, it's one of the, the events that I really like because it helps you to learn about the culture and also the different celebrations that they have for the different portions, you know, when you, when you talk about different cultures like the Asian community, you think that it's just Asian, but in the Asian community, you have Koreans, you have Vietnamese, you have, they speak different dialects, just as in the Hispanic community, you have Puerto Ricans, you have Mexicans, you have, you know, all different, they have a commonality of the language, but even the language has different meaning of the word, same words. So it's very nice to attend such an event. And then the days start rolling together, but I attended a principal appreciation reception, Mr. Barron was there, Dr. Reich was there, and myself, and then today I attended the Education Foundation Lunch, Legacy Luncheon, in which different members of the community come together to see what direction they're going to go to help the students and the teachers in AISD. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Pena, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg, thank you, Mrs. Pena, for doing my report for me. Let's see, I also attended the Band UIL Contest at Pennington Field. It's always a wonder to watch the kids twirling those flags and walking and not tripping, it's just amazing. And I, unlike all the others, apparently I was the only one that voted.
Uh-huh. Mr. Barron, go check the records, you can look.
I voted.
It's public record who voted, you can find out.
And let's see-
Don't throw us under the bus like that.
Tomorrow morning, I am a celebrity waiter along with Dr. Reich, I think, you going? Uh-huh, all right. For the Junior League of Arlington's annual winter fundraiser at the Convention Center in tuxedos.
11:30.
Come on out, spend some money. And that's my report.
Perfect, thank, thank you, Mr. Barron. With that, we have no other reports, the rest of us did a lot of stuff. Dr. Reich, any other? Dr. Reich, any?
That was the kind of report I was going to make.
Yeah.
Yeah, we saw lots of people and did lots of things.
Any items for, for us to review?
No, not at all, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. With that, at 9:18, well, you're not already going into closed session, and we are adjourned.